The November third Board of Selectmen's meeting, the meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be shown on local access television. If you'd be a stand and join us in a flash to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Um, David, is Scott coming up?
He is not.
Oh.
Just a quick announcement, he um, he had his third baby this morning.
Oh nice.
So um, it was not scheduled this way, but um, he is with his newborn.
Okay.
So if you-
Congratulations to Scott.
Are we skipping that or?
No, I, we still have to ask you to take a vote, so.
Okay.
Um, there is, in your package, you'll see that's, it's the traditional rollover of debt that we do every year. It's already budgeted for. Scott does a really nice job. He goes out to bid on annual basis to try to get the best rate. At this point, the annual percentage rate is point four percent through Newbury Port five cents. And as a result, he would be looking for a vote of the board to approve as presented and sign all the documents that are, will forward over to the bank.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, approve meeting minutes of September first.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And accept review meeting minutes of September fifteenth.
For review, uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have the ratification of Laura Williams, um. Ellen, do, with Matt, I was choosing here when she became the assistant director, but if you just wanna.
I would love to present her to the uh, to the town, to the selectmen. Uh, should, should we sit here?
Anyway.
Sure, sure.
Well, it is, it is a bittersweet moment for me to be leaving. Um, I've really enjoyed my six years tremendously in West Bridgewater. So it's really the capstone of like a thirty year career for me. And I couldn't have ended in a better place, so. I appreciate, as soon as I got here, um, the support, not only did the public give to the changes that I tried to um, uh, initiate in the library, but also from the town officials. The first thing, I had to do a bunch of stuff at the very beginning and you guys were just right there all the way through and it made things go relatively really quickly. I always brag about West Bridgewater. When I go to meetings, I say like, we got more done in six years than most people get done in twenty years, so I'm very proud of that. Um, and one of the um, big um, changes we made was, we did hire uh, an assistant director and Laura was our second assistant director. I couldn't be more thrilled to present her as the um, winning candidate of a very thorough and comprehensive search process that our elected Board of Library Trustees did. Um, we interviewed, they interviewed people and they consulted with me and um, with no um, you know, with trying to keep it as objective as possible, Laura was obviously the best choice. Um, and so um, she comes with an incredibly deep and wide uh, breadth of experience and she's, she's passionate about her work and um, I'm just thrilled to be able to pass the, the, the torch to her. And I was hoping Laura might say something about your philosophy and-
Sure.
And how you feel about libraries.
Yeah, um, I'm very happy and proud to be here tonight and West Bridgewater is a great community to not only work for, but work with. Um, being a librarian is a wonderful experience because you get to work with all ages, all abilities. Um, and I think the West Bridgewater Library under Ellen's direction has grown and thrived and is a place where people can explore and create and know that their questions are heard and that they're respected. Um, it's truly a community space and I'm honored to be a part of it. And I thank our Board of Trustees for not only being here tonight, but being so supportive. Um, while I've been assistant director, I know we'll work really well together as we move forward to this next phase in the library and many thanks to Ellen for getting us to where we are today. I look forward for what the future holds.
Great. Congratulations and thank you all for your years here.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Are there any questions or?
No, I just um, just express gratitude to Ellen for everything you've done. I, I've watched over the years what you've initiated for the library and sometimes I thought, well, that's what, not what a library does. But that's exactly the point. You took our library and brought it into the century and more. And you made it a place for everyone. Uh, you, you did a phenomenal job. You really did. I, I we appreciate everything you did. You ha- you have some big shoes to fill there. Um, what, what are some of your plans? Do you have any ideas that you want to share with us or would, would you rather keep them secret now so it's a surprise?
No, I think um, pla- immediate plans are just keeping staff morale high. Um, making sure we're offering a high quality of patron services. Continue our collection development so we have the latest and greatest titles. And um, yeah, that's kind of our immediate plans. Um, we've done a great job with the after age. Um, the after school um, age group. Um, we're now uh, able to do more uh, programs that kids are participating in. Through October, we had um, a whole series of crafting and creating events that was really well attended. Um, usually we had about ten to twelve kids at each and they registered and we got to interact with them and um, know names and know their interests. So just building community rapport and um, keeping the library a great space for everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're the best.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Congratulations to you. I love everything that's been happening with the library. I mean, I've been involved since I was in elementary school. I remember volunteering at the library to get the card system onto the computer and doing all that data entry in the nineties and yes. And then between the finance committee and you coming on board and it's, it's been a wonderful time watching the whole evolution of the library. So thank you both.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome. I mean, to dovetail what Laura was saying. Libraries are about literacy, but there are many kinds of literacy, one of which is digital. And so I know, I mean Laura's like, you know, sharp as a whip and can um, take things to the next level in terms of digital access and digital skills and all that kinda thing. So I'm very excited about what she has to bring to the, to the table.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Would any of the library trustees like to say anything before we?
I'll say something. I'd just like to say on behalf of all the trustees that we're very sorry to lose Ellen. She really has been a gem, has worked so hard to bring so many new innovative programs. The library is open more hours now. We're open two evenings a week. We're open Saturdays all year round. And this is what the citizenry wanted. They wanted more hours and so, and, and I know that Laura will continue many of the programs that Ellen has started and Ellen has never been afraid to try something new. And I'll mention that uh, some of us staff, Gail and Michelle, uh, got involved with development, developmentally disabled adults. Uh, Gail has a family member who lives in a group home. And there were complaints that they didn't have anywhere to go in the wintertime. You know, in the summertime, they would go on field trips and so they started a program. And it was, to our knowledge, the first program in the state. And now other libraries are contacting us to come out and do presentations because the program's been so successful.
Yeah, the state has actually recognized um, Gail and Michelle's program as being unique.
That's great.
And it is, yes, really.
So she wasn't afraid to dr- try new things and Laura is cut from the same cloth. So I expect someday we'll be talking about all kinds of other programs. We miss you already. But glad to have Laura.
Thank you.
Um, I'll keep it much shorter. Um, if, it may sound a little cliche, but if you really wanna see how something is, is run so right, then you have to watch, you know, Ellen's model because sh- we did encounter some challenges particularly with the unionization. But she weathered the storm and, you know, and there was times where it was stressful, but she really is a very good leader and a very good manager and I, I will elaborate more than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve the ratification of employment as library director?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you all. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we have, uh, to approve grant of land to Conservation Commission, um, two A Manley Street. David, do you wanna go over this?
Yeah, just briefly, um. There is a tract of land. I would like to pull up the map if we can, if you can get to this one here. Here it is. There you go, good. So here's a plot of land. It is currently owned by the Snell family. They will be donating it to the West Bridgewater Country Club, the per- I'm sorry, West Bridgewater Conservation Commission. Um, and the intent is, is that you could see that the river goes through um, that parcel. And it's going to give us the ability to allow people to now access the river, be able to park on the shoulder of Manley in a safe way. There is no cost. The Conservation Commission, if they grant, if they receive a tract of land, it does not require town meeting approval. It is subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Um, and once it is placed into conservation land, it is co- placed into conservation land in perpetuity. Um, so at this point, the Conservation Department has already reviewed it, agreed to it. Town council has agreed that the deed is clear, um, and can be transferred, and so I would ask you for your vote.
Thank you, David. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the land.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go to approve tie and bond contract for municipal vulun- vulnera- wow. Municipal vuln- I can't read tonight.
Vulnerability?
Vulnerability, wow. Preparedness planning services. David, do you wanna go over this one too?
So, uh, a month ago, I informed you that Chris did a nice job and applied for a grant through the state of Massachusetts. We received twenty-two thousand dollars to hire an engineering firm that is going to look at the concerns as a town that we have in preparation for any type of climate mitigation issues. So this money was, is going to be used towards tie and bond. We went out to bid, received three bids. They were the least expensive firm that was both responsive, meaning they could do the job and responsible, meaning that they could come in at under twenty-two thousand dollars. So they will devise a, a, a plan in a report. It will be presented to Chris and then to this board. At that point, once we identify the primary areas, we will then apply back to the state of Massachusetts for what we call an action grant. And hopefully we will receive enough money through that grant to then implement what their recommendations are. So for tonight, I'm asking you to approve this agreement for tie and bond for engineering purposes.
Thanks, David. Any comments, questions, or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, next we have the appointment of Berta Grossman to the Open Space and Recreation Commission. Do you just wanna say a little bit about yourself or?
Oh, sure. Um, my name is Berta Grossman, um, and I had some, uh, I had, I had some previous experience working with the Vermont East Conservation Corps. Uh, it got me really into the outdoors and um, I've always been into local community service, so. Um, I was ho- I'm hoping to be able to use uh, the skills that I learned there to um, be able to make progress in the trails and work on other projects in the West Bridgewater Trails.
That's great. Thank you for volunteering. Any comments, questions?
Are you from West Bridgewater?
I'm actually from East Bridgewater.
Okay, that's alright. We'll forgive you.
Thank you.
Do we have to remind her that west is better?
West is best. We'll just let you know that.
We all learned that in school.
That's why she's here now.
Okay. No, thank you. Thank-
We're from East Bridgewater.
Uh, the whole town knows now. Sorry, the camera thing. But thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. So good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for volunteering and taking skills that you're interested in. We're always looking for volunteers, so I'm very happy to see another, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a big opportunity for me too.
So is there a motion?
Do you have a motion? Sorry, I'm so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're the best.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the night.
You too.
Um, it's now six forty-five, so we'll move back to the first public hearing. This is a public hearing to discuss the police report dated October ninth, twenty twenty-one involving Southern Comfort Bar and Grill documenting the liquor license agent Sergeant Warner's findings of what he deemed to be a violation of the town's alcohol policy. Um, so Sergeant Warner, I guess first, do you wanna just um, brief us on your report? We've all had a chance to read it, but just a-
Excuse me?
To open-
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Yeah, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, on ten nine twenty-one, about one twenty AM. I drove by Southern Comfort, three twenty West Senate Street, using my cruiser two twenty, dressed and pulled a button uniform. I observed large crowds in the lot and the lot was filled with cars. I pulled in and observed large groups all over the lot. As I drove through, some got in their vehicles and began leaving, and then he stayed put, talking in groups. As I drove by the front of Southern Comfort, I observed a party entering the front door. All front windows were blacked out. I could not see inside, but I missed front. I packed my cru- cruiser and got out. As I did, I observed another party enter the front door. Excuse me. The front door is angled sideways so you cannot see through the front door from the front. I then walked to the door and clearly see inside. The business has a large amount of patrons still inside. I observed patrons with uh, beers in their hands. I knocked several times on the door. Finally, an employee opened the door for me. I asked him what time uh, his local license was. He acknowledged it was one AM. I asked him what time it was. He said it was one twenty-five AM. At that time, I told him to clear everybody out. I told him that his local license uh, was one AM. That was supposed to be everybody who was out of the business and everybody out of the lot. Uh, he acknowledged that. At that time, um, I counted twenty-five patrons that exited when I gave the exit order. And I wrote a order report on it and uh, forwarded it out to Ronald Hodgson. I'm informing him of uh, two possible egregious violations. Sale of alcohol, having served alcohol past closing time, unauthorized extended closure of license premise.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
So, are we off for you, or? So I'm not sure who wants to speak, but you're welcome to say anything. Yeah, go ahead. Um, just say your name and you can, you can stand in front of the microphone just so uh, we can hear a little better.
So I'm Antonio Wiggins. I'm one of the owners. Um, that day was uh, actually my birthday, so we had family and friends over. Um, to our knowledge at the time, we knew that we only had one o'clock to be open. So we closed down right before one. We did have some people still there. Um, it was I don't, I don't recall if it was as many as um, the officer said, but I know we had some family and friends that was there that was waiting for us to close and clean and to help with some of the equipment that we had brought in for the birthday. We had a DJ that day. Um, as far as right before uh, one, uh, my brother Leandre had went outside to make sure that people were going to their cars and uh, leaving the parking lot. Um, right when he came to the door, um, I guess people called and said that the police officer's at the door. I came, um, he spoke to me. Uh, I told him, he asked me about the one o'clock. I told him that we had the one o'clock, um, that we wasn't open to the public, that we were actually cleaning and, and then trying to get out of here. He didn't let me know that um, we couldn't have people in by a certain time. We wasn't serving or, or selling any alcohol after one o'clock. The people that were there did still have a drink in their hand, uh, probably to helping us get our stuff together to get out of there. Once he told us what we couldn't do and could do, um, I immediately told everybody just to leave. Everybody walked out with the same, um, minute or two. Drinks were took in, they sat down, left, and the parking lot was clear within the next few minutes. Um, I told him I wasn't aware of the, us being like, we wasn't open to the public. So the people that were in there that was trying to help us get our stuff together to get out of there. When he came in, he said it was too many people to be on the premises, um, at this time. Once he, like I said, once he brought that to my attention, I just cleared the house. That was it. Um, it wouldn't, normally we don't stay open that day. Um, I just, we had a lot of people over there due to my birthday day. Um, Ron had left the building. It was just me and my brother there at the time, um, Audrey and Ron wasn't there. It was just me and my brother at the time, so we was basically the only owners there at the time that was pre-relating the whole crowd. I think it was, um, he also informed us to have a um, what was the license? The crowd control?
Crowd control, yeah.
Um, at the time, we didn't have one. He had mentioned to us to get that. We got that all, I think, the next day.
Next day. Okay. Any questions?
What would you do differently?
Well, differently I wouldn't, like normally, like I said before, we, we don't even have a crowd there after one. This particular time, it was my birthday, which still doesn't make it appropriate, but uh, moving forward, we just go down the list of the things that he had already explained to us that day. Cause he sat inside for a little while and just telling me the do's and the don'ts and what's acceptable and what's not and what's the rules. So once he made it clear, as he was telling me, you know, everybody cleared with no problem. And once he got through telling me everything, I said, you wouldn't have to worry about that again, cause now I know. I didn't know clearly at the time. I just knew we couldn't be open to the public or serving after one, which we wasn't. Moving forward, doing differently. Uh, he told me everybody has to be off the premises by twelve thirty, twelve twenty, something like that. Uh, as far as like, out the building, anybody after one that's gonna be there would have to be uh, employees. Or if we're gonna be there after, as late as we was gonna be there, contact, I think he said either contact uh, the town or con- contact the police station to let somebody know that we'll be there later after one. Either cleaning or doing any type of on the premises time after one o'clock. So me jotting all that down, those are the things I would move forward. If I needed to be there after that, I would contact um, the proper people I need to contact, but I, we don't plan on being there after that, that late again anyway, so.
Okay. Do you need to, Berta, any other questions?
Um, what time you no- do you normally close the doors at? Meaning everything's cleaned up, you're closed, doors are locked. What time?
Uh, twelve, uh, twelve thirty a quarter, no, twelve twenty, twelve thirty or twenty of, depending on the crowd, but I mean, we don't usually have a crowd that much larger at that time anyway, so it's easier for us to close earlier. Our kitchen closes at eleven.
Mm-hmm.
And um, the crowd usually don't exceed past twelve, twelve thirty, you know.
We do last call at twelve fifteen.
We do last call twelve fifteen? So you're usually out of there by twenty of one-ish?
Definitely.
Yeah.
And how many people were still there?
Usually?
No, this, this particular night.
I mean, I didn't count exactly twenty-five, the officer said, but um, there was a few people there. My kids were there, um, some of their friends were there. And um, we had a couple of family members that were there also, and so, I mean, I don't, I don't, yeah, and staff, so.
And that was at twenty-five past one?
Yes.
I'm not sure I'm clear on what's changed since then. I haven't heard you say definitively that you closed the doors at twelve thirty. So when's the last time you allowed people to enter?
So we close the kitchen at eleven. So last call at the bar is at twelve fifteen. So if you're not eating at, after eleven, then we call last call at twelve fifteen. Like, like I said, usually by the time the kitchen's closed, the business itself is kinda dwindling down, so we normally don't have a crowd after twelve fifteen until you call last call. We're usually dying down anyway.
I understand that this is still a fairly new business to, to the town. Um, I know that I am personally a little frustrated by this. Just because you're so new to this community, you just got the license, I would think you would already know the rules. Um, so I am a little concerned that um, that the rules be followed. Um, yeah, I know.
Okay, um, Sergeant, did you have anything else to add or do you agree with um, Mr. Wiggins' statements?
No, I would uh, say that when I made the announcement, when I was in there speaking with him, he was very cooperative with me. Um, we talked for a while and as I was speaking with him, people were exiting, they realized the police were there. When I finally said to him, everybody that's not an employee must leave, that's when I started a head count. At that point, I counted twenty-five people that exited. I allowed the employees to stay. I told them, anybody that's not working or there can stay. Everybody else out. And that's when I made a head count of twenty-five. So the twenty-five people that left, after we finished our conversation and I finally said, everybody else, let's go. Anybody that's not an employee, and that's, I counted twenty-five people. Specifically counted that. There were more than that when I first went inside there. People were exiting as I was having a conversation with him. When I told him the exit order, that's when I counted twenty-five. I'd also like to point out that he was given a copy of the rules and regulations that spell out clearly when the last drink can be served, how the lot is supposed to be cleared and everybody out of the place at his closing hour of one AM. So he was given that, but not that long ago. Like you said, he has a new license today.
Small community. I have my children in this community. Um, it sounds like there were violations here. I'm not hearing anything that's saying that there weren't violations. And it sounds that according to the policy, that there are certain steps that we're supposed to take.
I mean, I, I, I feel bad for you. You're a brand new business. Having a birthday is supposed to be fun and not result in anyone being penalized afterwards. And it is your business, so bringing your family, I ge- I get it, I really do. I think we all do. But at the same time, having a liquor license is a privilege. And it, it's something you need to be very careful with, especially because you are serving alcohol. People leave, sometimes people drink too much, and it sounds like you were doing all the right things with that regard. Chris didn't say anything about anyone acting unruly or, so you know, you had some control over the place, but at the same time, your control also extended to the fact that you needed to be closed at one o'clock.
Yes.
And um, the policy, David, if we could, do we have the policy up now? I believe it's a minimum of two days suspension. Um, am I correct?
So what is, um, so the board has to make a decision as to, there are two different types of violations according to your alcohol policy. It is either what we call an egregious incident or a non egregious incident. On page four of the policy, it stipulates specifically as to what the board determined to be an egregious incident. You'll see that they are bull pointed in number two, it is sale of alcohol or having alcohol served alcohol, having served alcohol past closing time. Um, there is a license that we have in here as well, so first we'll go to his license. We will see that his, oh, sorry. Um, so we'll see that the license does stipulate that closing time is at one AM and last call is thirty minutes prior to close. Excuse me, I'm gonna go back to the policy. I'm gonna go to here for one second. Hours of operation. We will see three, all sales and delivery of alcohol beverages shall cease thirty minutes prior to the closing hour. So the license says one o'clock. That means according to the policy and the license that they cannot serve alcohol uh, within that thirty minute period of time. And that they must all be cleared within fifteen minutes of the closing hour, which in this case would be twelve forty-five. There doesn't seem to be a discrepancy of facts that there was alcohol at least being drunk in, in hand past one o'clock. Seeing that those don't seem to be in question, then it does appear that sale of alcohol or having served alcohol out past closing time, in my opinion, would create an egregious incident. If the board agrees with me, then yes, on the next page, top section, number three, the continuation. During this hearing, the LLA will determine whether the incident constituted a violation and render a decision. In that your hands, you know, in this case is, is that you must suspend for a minimum of two days. So with those facts, the board has to determine two items. One is, is this an egregious incident? If you determine that, then you are required to suspend a minimum of two days. Obviously, if you determine it to be a non egregious incident, then you would not have to suspend. But I do think that the facts are clear that it would constitute an egregious incident.
So it sounds like based on that summary, our policy is already written. Any suspension or revocation, mm, nevermind.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't realize you were reading.
I've lost my spot. Well, it said two days.
Within twenty days, there is a, yeah.
Well, with, we'll include a minimum two day suspension and up to revocation of license. So at a minimum, it's a two day suspension.
So I, I'm- So, I, I, I think you violated the policy. Um, actually, I don't think I know. Based on everything that was said, you did. And I think at this point, your license should be suspended. Uh, I, I would feel comfortable with two days.
Yes.
Um, you know, no longer than two days. It's the first time, it's too bad, it's right after you open, and I could feel, you know, and it was a, a family event, but it's, you gotta separate the business from the family.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I would say, if you ever have any questions about how the policy reads or anything occurring on your property, your first call should be to the police department.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they do a very good job in town of not only protecting and serving, but also assisting business owners. If you have questions, they're there to help you. So, unless there's more to discuss, I put a motion forward to suspend the license for two days. And-
And I'd like to select it to be the next two days.
The next two days?
May I just interject? Please, I'm so sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Um, please, it would be a motion first, whether it's considered an egregious incident or not.
Okay.
And then you would determine as to what the action would be as a result.
Okay, so-
Uh, before we take a motion, there's a public hearing, so we do have to ask the public for any input, if there is anyone who would like to speak. No, okay.
Okay, so, so I would like to make, make a motion to suspend the license for two days.
That it is an egregious-
I'm sorry, I keep jumping to, I apologize. It is an egregious incident. Um, and secondly, to suspend, do we need to vote on that first, David?
I think it would be why to be correct.
Individually? Okay, so first I'll make a motion that it is an egregious incident.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a second motion to suspend the liquor license for two days, um, effective immediately.
But that-
So, it'd be Thursday and Friday.
Yes.
Uh, they would still be able to be open for serving food, correct? There's no issues with that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so you would still be o- open for food service?
Just to clarify, not immediately. It would be tomorrow and, yes.
Well, Thursday and Fri- I'm, yeah, I, thank you. So, the motion is to suspend the license for two da- two days, Thursday and Friday.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. It's a, I feel bad, you're a family trying to celebrate a birthday.
Oh, I understand.
But at the same time, we have to also set up-
Well, we understand as well.
In, in misread, if you could just make sure you stipulate the dates would be the fourth and the fifth, November fourth and fifth.
This is the motion that never ends. So, the motion is to suspend the license for two days, Thursday and Friday, November fourth and fifth.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's all. Thank you guys for coming in. And if you have any questions ever, just reach out to our office or to Sergeant Warner.
We should have-
No, take less.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Seven, okay. Um, the next one is, this is a public hearing to discuss the police report dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, involving Yangtze and documenting the liquor license agent Sergeant Warner's findings of what he deemed to be a violation of the town's alcohol policy. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sergeant Warner, again, if you'd like to summarize your report.
Sure. Um, acting on the tip of under insurance on the premises of Yangtze, I conducted a planned close inspection on ten twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, twenty-two fifty-five. During this planned close inspection, I identified five underage parties. A man urinating by the front door, two men drinking alcohol outside of the building that had been purchased inside, and a man standing outside the front door holding an eighteen-pack of Bud Light. I arrived and called Sergeant Winkler, made him aware that I was on scene. Uh, he held the cruisers back. And then went and, um, exited my vehicle and walked inside the front door. One patron was standing by the door and another patron was urinating in the front bushes next to the front door. I then entered the establishment and proceeded to the lounge. The lounge was full, um, very few empty seats. Um, and there was no available stools at the bar. I observed about half of the patrons that were young, um, inside, uh, under twenty-three, I would later learn. And half of the patrons that appeared to be between ages of forty and fifty years old. I walked around as if I was looking for someone and observed a drink in front of every young patron. There was no food on any of the tables containing the young crowd and no food in front of anyone at the bar. At this point, the bartender asked me if I could help me, and I told him I was just looking for a friend and I would be back. I exited the front door and observed two, two underage men standing outside talking. I proceeded to the left side of the parking lot and called dispatch. I randomly ran, uh, had him run a few plates on me and got hit on a nineteen-year-old female from East Bridgewater. And I then obtained her photograph and, uh, entered. Went to go enter back into Yangtze. I arrived back at the front door, that's when I observed two different patrons standing outside holding, uh, highball-type glasses, which what appeared to be filled with whiskey. Um, I observed the third man standing right by the door talking to them, but still outside holding an eighteen-pack of Bud Light cans under his arms. At the same time, approximately five young-looking patrons that had been at the bar drinking were now coming out of the front door. It was at this time that I held up my badge and identified myself as a police officer, instructed all parties present to step back inside. Pulled out my cell phone, called Sergeant Winkler and instructed him to send cruisers at this time. The party with the eighteen-pack went back inside, but he continued into the lounge. Had a lot of people to try to round up the front door and he skipped by me, didn't listen to my commands and went into the lounge. Um, he tipped the lounge off, thought he was dead. Um, that party hid the eighteen-pack under some chairs in the corner of the, of the lounge. Um, and some of the, um, some of the juveniles that were in there, or under-twenty-ones, had exited an exit-only door that's behind the bar. My cruisers, as they arrived, two cars left the lot at that time. Both were stopped, both were identified as under-twenty-one-year-olds. Um, I then walked around, carded everybody inside the bar. One of the people that I stopped at the front door was under-twenty-one that had been at the bar, and two more inside at tables were under-twenty-one. One of them was eighteen years old and had no ID at all. He had, uh, he escorted to his car. I checked him, he had no ID on him, no fake ID or anything else. And he was escorted out to his car to retrieve his, um, his ID, and he wasn't even eighteen. Um, that's essential facts.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, um, Mr. Wong, correct? Um, would you like to speak and say whatever you, you'd like?
Um, I, uh, I feel, uh, very sorry, uh, that, uh, incident happened. And, uh, those should, should not be, uh, happen, uh, that way. And I, we will, uh, try to, uh, effort to make sure it won't happen, uh, again. We just get to, like, uh, enforce, uh, our policy to make sure everything should be, should be, uh, should be lined up and, uh, uh, avoid those happen.
Were you on premise that night?
Uh, I was knocked and I just come in late, yeah.
Questions?
So, what's changing?
Uh, well, I will be there, um, personally more, especially on a Friday and Saturday night. Just to, like, especially like that to, uh, make sure people won't hang out outside of the property and, uh, like, uh, uh, any, uh, underage should not be able to, to get in or get, get by to getting any drinks.
How did it happen? How did underage people get in and obtain a drink?
I talked to the bartender, but, uh, he told me he didn't serve the underage, but probably because they're sitting on the table in the dining room and someone might pass, uh, the drink to the minor. But, um, we will have more, uh, uh, help and, uh, to make sure those things are not happening anymore.
Our ID, our identification, it's not being checked now?
Yeah, and we, uh, we, uh, bring in a scan, like, uh, uh, to those scanner to check the IDs. So, if, if they, someone already used the ID, then they would identify them and keep record also, yeah.
Is that new?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's something new you're doing at the restaurant?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. I don't want West Bridgewater to get this sort of reputation.
I understand that, yeah. It never ha-
That's concerning to me.
Yeah, it never happened like that before, but I think since the COVID and lots of places have been closed early and, and then we become the one openly and maybe that's why that, uh, the underage and, uh, they, they tried, try to find a way to, to get in. But that this should not be happened this way, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be happening.
I understand that.
So, I've been to your restaurant a few times in the past six months and it's been quiet, fairly quiet.
Yeah.
You know, not too many people there, food was very good.
Thank you. I think that's the night for the, like, uh, Red Sox playing for the, for the, uh, for the, like, uh, 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 conference final.
And-
Maybe that's why we draw more people. Normally, we have the older crowd and they are relaxing and enjoying their-
Yeah, sometimes when, you know, one underage person hears, they got away with it somewhere.
Yeah.
They tell all their friends. And then you become a popular spot for the rest of the underage, people looking to drink.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't want that problem happening again.
Um- Yeah, and it sounds like it, it wasn't, uh, a pretty sight that night with them outside and everything else.
I just don't know, yeah.
So, um, I mean, you, you seem very remorseful. Unfortunately, that doesn't excuse everything that happened.
I don't think-
So, it means there still is, I mean, I believe everything that was explained meets the level of an egregious action. And, um, saying that first, again, we go back to, we have a minimum two-day suspension.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not hearing anything that says it wasn't an egregious, um, incident. Um-
How many people did you have working the front of house?
Uh, of, uh, for the night, about four people, yeah.
Do you think that's enough for the, to be able to monitor, I guess, the, um, entire restaurant?
Yeah, yeah. If, if it's necessary, I will bring you more, larger staff, yeah.
Was the restaurant side and bar side open, or just the bar side?
Uh, the both sides are open.
Both sides were, were open?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that this meets the requirements of an egregious incident.
Okay, um, it is a public hearing again. So, if there is anyone in the public that would like to speak?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, Scott Ames, I actually worked at the Yangtze in high school. It was a very long time ago. And our name is also with the original proprietors of the Yangtze, which was Eleanor and Jimmy Ing. Um, this, this is pretty, to me, it's pretty extreme. When I was a kid washing dishes there, people did come in underage, try to drink, but the waiters would stop them. And I'm just kinda surprised that there seems to be kind of a breakdown at, at that point. Why? I can't picture all these kids going up to the bar. Where was the waitstaff and why did the waitstaff kind of intervene? That's my, my two cents. I think two days, if that's what you decide, would be kind of lenient considering when person was eighteen years old.
Not even eighteen.
Yeah, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I would just like to add that this isn't the first, um, this report states that I was acting on a tip. However, I was tipped off prior to COVID setting in and getting ready to move in on, uh, all reports of underage drinking. By then, Chief May, who had, uh, been told about it, um, then COVID shut all the restaurants down before I could do anything. And then I received another tip. So, this was the third tip of underage drinking going on inside there. This one.
I'm sure you were tipped every time either, right?
So.
Thank you, Sergeant. Is there anything else? Uh, so, I'm sorry, so you made a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so now as far as due suspension, when it will occur and how many days?
This was the third tip. Have there been any other incidents in the last few years that have been documented?
No, not at the time, no.
Okay.
Have you driven by there any other times since you've seen large crowds there, or?
Their lounge is, is busy at times, spotty. I've gone in when I have worked nights and checked, usually on weekdays. And, um, there was no young car crowd in there on weekdays. I work the day shift, unfortunately, so, so, um, I have to lie on a four-twelve midnight shift to go over. There's been a, a couple incidents, um, where the police responded there, but they didn't interact with anybody under twenty-one.
I grew up across the street there. I love that restaurant. And I never saw these sort of issues, so I'm glad that they're being cracked down on now and that we don't get this sort of reputation in town. So, I'd like to make a motion, um, for a two-day suspension, for it to be Thursday and Friday, November fourth and fifth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Hope everything goes better going forward.
Uh, we have this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Okay, um, vote on, write a first, write a refusal. Um, sixty-one A lands, one sixty-six South Street and one Ames Drive. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, oh, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, there is land owned by the Isaac family that is currently in sixty-one A. Excuse me, I'm gonna just bring you to a map. Um, I think it's this direction. Here it is. Um, I'm gonna blow it up.
Are we not using the Zoom option anymore?
Oh, Google Earth, what happened?
The Google Earth?
Well, you weren't, there's, there's no lines on Google Earth to see it, so, um, so we thought this would be better.
Oh, okay.
So, up on South Street, there is a new road that has been placed in, uh, a, a one-house subdivision uh, in order to meet zoning. There had to be some land that the new owner was going to need to purchase. And so, that new owner made a deal with the Isaac family. So, you can see where it says acquire from Isaac, which is a skinny little strip of land that is identified as Lot forty-four B, about seventeen thousand five hundred square feet. And in return, land that was owned by the propo- by the person, um, that was buying that is swapping their land over to the Isaac family of equivalent size. So, it's really just a land swap. Um, the land that is identified as Lot forty-four B is what is cur- that parcel of property is currently in sixty-one A, which means that the town has a first right of first refusal. Uh, and if you want to exercise the ability to purchase that, um, there is no purchase and sale agreement that stipulates as to the cost, because this is a land swap, usually there's a dollar value. So, if you wanted to be able to exercise your first right of refusal, we would have to have the property known as forty-four A appraised, identify the value of that property, and then au- call a special town meeting, and then get the funds and the authorization in order to purchase the land. Um, the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Board of Assessors, as required by law, have already reviewed it. And they are recommending that we do not exercise our first right of refusal. As you can see, it is basically landlocked. There's not any real value to the town, um, but it is your decision to make.
Thank you, David. Denise Verda, any comments?
No, no, it's landlocked. There's no value to the town. I don't see a point in, um, exercising our right for, um, first refusal. Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, so you would, you would, the, the motion would be that you would be declining your first right of first refusal.
How much land is that, David, in acre-wise? I can't really read it.
So, so an acre is forty-three thousand square feet.
Uh-huh.
So, it's just a little bit below half an acre.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, public up here. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak? Okay, um-
Marcy, is there anything you'd like to tell? Marcy, is there anything you'd like to tell us?
And the town administrator's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, tomorrow, uh, as we saw, the library director was in here earlier today. I concur with all the thoughts that have been said about Ellen. She's really done an excellent job. Uh, she will be retiring effective on Saturday. Tomorrow, there will be a farewell event, uh, starting at ten o'clock. Uh, it will run the course of the day, and then, um, and then it's also a welcome, because obviously our new director will be coming in, so they'll both be there. So just giving a heads up to both the board and to the public, anybody that would like to stop by?
Is it tomorrow or Friday?
I'm so sorry, it's Friday. I am getting ahead of myself, but yes, it is Friday.
Looking forward to that weekend, huh, David?
Apparently so. I don't have anything good planned, but. Um, next on the, um, Council on Aging, Veterans Day, they have an annual luncheon. Again, Marilyn really does a nice job with this. Uh, she will have people from the school that is there, uh, they will, so they will have a chorus. They do an excellent job. So there will be entertainment. That starts at eleven o'clock, so for about an hour, uh, people will be entertained, and then lunch will be served at noon. And the selectmen are, are invited, uh, and so this is just to let you know that if you would like to attend, uh, you are more than welcome to be there. Um, I will be there, and the ladies in the office, Lorna will be there, Linda is off that day, so we'll be there as well. We go every year. Um, next one is just an FYI about the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade. Uh, it will be on November eleventh, next Thursday. The parade itself starts at ten o'clock. They ask everybody to get there at nine, although I will tell you to stand there for an hour in the cold. Sometimes it's not easy. Um, but as you can see, is that we are, we're, we're in Division Three, town of West Bridgewater. And we will, they were asking us to be there no later than nine forty-five. So, uh, usually the selectmen, myself, and other people from, you know, the chief show up, obviously. Um, and we're usually pretty well represented. At the very end of the ceremony, it's only about a twenty, twenty-five minute walk. We will conclude at Legion Field. I believe at that point, um, Anthony is speaking. And, um, and, uh, we will hear, uh, other dignitaries speak from other towns. There is no food due to COVID, so it'll just be a, um, people will speak, and then, as is usual, um, we will give out awards for, for the best parade. And the last is, is a PFAS update. Um, the board instructed me last time to send out a letter to the water department, which we did do. We've asked them for a weekly update. There was no weekly update provided this week. There was no, mean, no new news. Um, a letter did go out to all residents as required by DEP rules and regulations. They complied with the law, and that letter is approved by DEP, so everything that is on there, we know, is accurate. On a piece of good news is that we did ask our state assembly as to whether or not they could help us with funds. And at this point, s- um, State Rep. Michelle Dubois and I spoke the other day. Um, she has secured a hundred thousand dollars as part of a budget, um, a budget amendment. And we could use those funds to be able to hire an engineer or to try to do some type of temporary or mobile carbon filtration system. She had placed in for three hundred and fifty thousand, because the water department thought that that's what they were going to need. Uh, I have also had a conversation with Senator Timmeltie, and my expectation and request has been to the senator to place the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar amendment as part of the Senate override budget amendment. It is my understanding after speaking to both Michelle and Walter, that if Walter can get that approved at the Senate at three hundred and fifty thousand, it will go into a reconciliation bill with the House, and hopefully we can get the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and start having some type of mitigation on behi- on the PFAS. That is my report.
If I could just add, on the PFAS issue, I did go to the water department's meeting Monday night, as did several residents. And there were some very good questions asked, so I would highly recommend everyone who has concerns to listen to that meeting. Um, again, several residents attended, you attended, and there were a lot of very good questions asked, including for the Rosel McDonald to be tested specifically at the school to see what the level is there. Whereas that, that's the closest school to Manly Street. And the water department agreed to have that done.
Um, there is one other item. I do, I wanna make sure you were done with PFAS. It's one other item I did want to address, but I don't want to jump in if you're still discussing.
No, that, that was about it?
Um, so I just really want to take this opportunity to say thank you to a handful of people in town. Last Wednesday, quite frankly, we were not as well-prepared for the storm that came in. We are on alert from the National Weather Service. It's really funny. Like, I'm not trying to be critical. But we had Tropical Storm Henri that came in and knocked over a couple of pine cones, and we were told that the world was gonna end. And I'm, you know, I get direct result, uh, um, information from the Na- National Weather Service, and they told us to expect three to four inches of rain and a little bit of wind. Well, it turned out to be a lot more than that. We had documented in West Bridgewater that we had at least twelve wind gusts that exceeded seventy-four miles per hour, which is hurricane-force winds. And we know as we went down closer to the coast, there was at least half a dozen documented winds, winds that exceed a hundred miles per hour, which is now category two to three for hurricane-force winds. So we saw a lot of trees come down. But I can tell you, um, our DPW department was called in at three AM. They did a fantastic job doing what they could to do to clear the roads. Uh, the fire chief responded at four AM and took immediate command. I was texting with him at five thirty, um, in making sure at, whatever he needed for resources. Our building inspector was on, in town by six AM, along with our DPW director, um, again, surveying the town. We had a gas leak in one building that we had to take care of and secure. We ended up having a fire in another building that had to be secured as well. And all of that, while eighty-six percent of the town had no power. Um, so I came into town a few minutes after seven, um, and we started the process, and we, you know, it was a very long day for everybody. But I really want to commend the fire department ran around all day long. Um, at one time, I don't want to say this was the last number, but I can say somewhere around seven thirty at night, I was told that they had already had seventy-five call-outs. So seventy-five call-outs in twelve hours is pretty immense. Um, the police department, again, we heard sirens all day. They ran around, they did everything they could. We called in extra people. Um, and again, both chiefs deserve a lot of credit for taking command that they did. And I also want to say thank you to our residents. You know, some of our residents lost power for more than two days. And although, you know, that's frustrating, and we did receive some phone calls, our residents were really, really understanding. And we did, I think, the fire chief did a fantastic job of making sure that people got, were responded to. Our Council on Aging was open. If anybody had, we had food there, we had water there, we had the heat on. It's on generator power. Again, thanks to the town, we have a generator large enough to keep that building open. And, um, and so without notice, this town responded extremely well, um, both the staff and residents. And I just want to say thank you to all those people. They really did a fantastic job. And by Saturday, one hundred percent of the town, to my understanding, by Saturday afternoon, Saturday early evening, one hundred percent of our residents all got back up with power. So again, I think everybody just deserves a lot of credit for that.
Thank you for that, David.
Thank you.
Is this when we reiterate, West is best?
I was out of power for three days, and I'm still happy with everything.
Yep.
I still am appreciative of everything. I called the fire department at four AM when the next-door neighbor's tree came down on the power lines, and they were out within like ten minutes. It was crazy, so, yeah, definitely appreciative.
Okay, with there, nothing further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.